Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve the council agenda and agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council will have additions or corrections for you. Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
By Pat, second by Dave to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. In vocation, Crosswind Church. Good evening. Throughout the rain, that was.
Good evening, I know, right? So, yes, it's a privilege to pray for you guys as you start your meetings, so let's bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord, we seek your favor and your blessing over our community. Uh, Lord, may you give wisdom to the leaders here and a great grace within our community towards one another, that we would really seek the good of our community. And, uh, Lord, we pray that there would be uh, just a real, uh, sense of unity within our community as well, that we would uh, really represent the, the best of what we can be and, uh, really honoring you. And so, Lord, I, I pray uh, that that would be true here and in Hutchinson, McLeod County, and, uh, Lord, pray for the city council, uh, members that, uh, Lord, that you would bless them and their families and, uh, Lord, that they would have uh, just a great energy, uh, to be able to fulfill their duties and perseverance and resilience. Uh, I know it's not always easy, um, Lord, and so we just pray for them and that this meeting will go well. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Second. Fudge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, we do have a proclamation underneath there. Whereas the vision of Toastmasters International Organization is to empower people to achieve their full potential and realize their dreams. And whereas Toastmasters International is the world-leading organization devoted to communication, public speaking, and leadership skills, and has over two hundred and sixty-five thousand members in a hundred and forty-nine countries. And whereas since the Toastmasters Organization began in nineteen twenty-four, more than three million men and women have benefited from communication and leadership programs. And whereas the members of the Toastmasters benefit from improving communication skills, constructive evaluations, and better fertilization skills, leadership skills, and increased self-confidence and, and added division. And whereas the mission of the Toastmasters Club is to provide mutual support and positive leader environment in which every member has the opportunity to develop communication and leadership skills, which in turn fosters self-confidence and personal growth. And whereas the Hutchinson Toastmasters number-two club has added leaders and citizens to our community to better become thinkers, listeners, and speakers in local, regional, nationals, and international leadership events. And the club has distinguished itself to receive the Toastmasters Distinguished Club Award for the last three years. Now, therefore, I, Gary T. Force here, Mayor of Hutchinson, Minnesota, here to proclaim October as Toastmasters Month in the city of Hutchinson. And call upon all citizens of this city to join in celebrating the hundredth anniversary of Toastmaster International and the forty-first anniversary of the Hutchinson Toastmasters Club. Uh, we do have a resolution underneath there, too. It's a resolution number one-five-nine-two-zero. Resolution accepting six thousand dollar donation from Ruth Torgerson for the swing set at Fireman's Park. And just a side note on there, uh, Marlon Torgerson, uh, was mayor for eleven years in Hutchinson. And he served on the fire department for twenty years.
Motion to approve, resolution one-five-nine-two-zero. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve that resolution. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Uh, public comment, let's come forward. State your name and address for the record, and, uh, please keep it under five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jill Haas. Uh, my business address, I have a couple, actually, Olia Gifts and Goods at Three Main Street and Sips on Forty-three Main Street. I'm just here on behalf of local business owners, those of us that have expressed, expressed concern about the homeless, um, men in town. It is just becoming, I let it be for a while, and it's now becoming an issue that my customers are bringing up to me. I believe it's becoming a concern um, for safety, um, as well as, um, just our businesses, the taxpayers, um, businesses, and those of us that live in town that pay taxes as well. Um, just wondering from our point of view, um, if there's anything that we can do. Um, I think we all feel a little bit stuck as business owners, not quite sure what, um, we're able to do, what is legal, what is not legal. Um, and so, that is why I wanted to come to you and just express those concerns. Um, it's gotten to the point where it is affecting my business every single day. I have customers bring it up every single day that I'm at my businesses. Um, and I think it's become a major deal, and I've heard that from a lot of community members, so.
Yep, we are going to discuss that coming up, so.
Yeah, I think under, under discussion or under communications, um, we're gonna have a conversation on what the city has done to date regarding the issue. I'm gonna have Mark talk on legalities. He can address some of your concerns on what business owners can or cannot do. And then I'll talk about ordinances that we have in place and potential, any changes in ordinances that we could do. So, we'll do our best to try to address that. And then I guess if the council, it's gonna get to you whether or not you wanna take any, it's not scheduled as a public hearing, but whether or not you'd wanna take any comment at that point, or maybe it's a a future discussion that you'll, you'll set at a, at a later date. So, yes, we will be talking about that in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on, uh, we have, uh, regular meeting minutes of September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve those minutes as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of resolution number one-five-nine-one-eight, disposal of surplus Hutchinson Police Department property that's unclaimed property and bicycles. B is approval of resolution number one-five-nine-one-nine, disposal of surplus Hutchinson Police Department property. Got bicycles on there again. Must have a lot of bicycles. Uh, C is, uh, approval of resolution number one-five-nine-two-one, disposal of surplus wastewater department property, and that's scrap metal. Uh, D is approval of summer, Somerset ponds, forty-sixth and forty-seventh cleaning project. Uh, E is claims appropriation and contract payments. Does anybody want anything pulled off?
I have a question on, uh, B, under resolution five-one-five-nine-one-nine. I see there's a knee scooter on there. Is that?
Uh, let's, uh, let's pass the.
Okay, I'll get B.
We'll pull it off for discussion.
We'll pull that off.
Okay.
Motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of motion B-one-five-nine-one-nine.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve consent agenda. Remove and B for discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. B, what was your question?
Question is, is there's a knee scooter on there? Uh, is that something that could be donated to the DAV?
Uh, I believe that was, was that on B or was that on A? Under unclaimed property.
I thought it was on A.
Yeah, I think it was on A's list. Is that what you were, okay. I guess maybe Mark would be the better person to answer this question than me. I mean, it's unclaimed property, so, um, generally speaking, we haven't done anything like that in the past. Um, I think, uh, a- as far as I'm concerned, it would be fine by me, but I don't know if that's something that the council would have to take action on in order to make that happen.
Yep, and the short answer is no, we can't do that. Um, because the property's been abandoned, it's now property of the city, and the city cannot make donations to charitable organizations.
All right, answers my question. Making a motion to approve it, then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. All right, discussion on loitering concerns.
Yep, Mayor Council, I know we have a good group of people here in the public for this item, and so this was brought to, or was asked of myself and staff to put on the agenda night for discussion amongst, uh, the council members, and so staff is doing that. And we've got Tom Gibson here, our police chief, and then Mark Savora, city attorney. I've asked him to kinda help walk us through, um, the issue that we have in town, um, what's been done, um, what's being done, what can be done, what can't be done. Um, just briefly, this is, I think, almost year eleven now that I've been here in Hutchinson, and every year I've been here, we've had a homelessness issue in town during the summer. Um, I think the one probably problem or concern this year is that the, it's been a major focus on Main Street, which historically hasn't necessarily taken place on Main Street. It's probably other areas of town, or they've just kinda stayed out of the, the public view, but, um, staff is well aware of the concern. Um, as, as Mark gave me, we've got currently twenty-seven pending cases in court with various different individuals for being charged from the city for violations of various different codes in regards to, um, loitering and other, um, city code violations. And so, that's just kind of a, a background on what's kinda been done. I'll ask Tom to come up and maybe share a little bit more on some of the details of what's been done to date, and then I'll have Mark, I said, kinda share more on the legal side of things, so.
Good evening, once again, Mayor and Council. Um, I, I think it's important for people to understand, um, we have had, um, we've responded to calls uh, with these two individuals, um, at least a hundred and five times since, uh, March, April. Um, but we've had many more contacts with them that have been either self-initiated or uh, have just not been documented as well. Um, so we're well aware, uh, of the issues. Um, some of the things that we've done, I mean, I'll, I'll just come right out and say, we have arranged uh, to have transportation for these two individuals, uh, to a shelter of their choice in St. Cloud, which there are several. Um, tried to guide them to that, uh, that ending, essentially, um, to which they've both refused, uh, any help. Um, as a matter of fact, the comment they made to me, um, just last week is they get numerous donations from members of the community, and as a matter of fact, um, blankets and that type of thing, they don't need. Unfortunately, they end up in the trash because they can't, uh, they have no room to carry them around. So, um, I think we've done virtually, as, um, Matt alluded to, uh, with the different charges that, uh, um, we've sent over, um, we've also, um, numerous businesses on Main Street, um, and elsewhere have trespassed these individuals, uh, from their property, and we've responded to those calls as well. Um, I think the, the, you know, the public sidewalk, I think there's this misconception among the public that, um, the police department can just grab these individuals and, uh, throw them in a car and haul them to the near next town, uh, you know, or something similar to that, or throw them in jail for loitering or that type of thing. Um, and a lot of the loitering ordinances statutes nationwide have been found unconstitutional because it's public property. Um, we, we do have an ordinance, and I, I'll let Mark speak more to the ordinances than, than me, but we do have an ordinance that talks about them, uh, or any, any individual, um, obstructing traffic on a sidewalk. Um, the interpretation of that is pretty vague, however. I mean, I guess in my mind, if you can, if you can walk around somebody um, that's sitting on a sidewalk without having to walk in the roadway, then they're not obstructing this, the sidewalk. Um, and in my business, you have to be very specific about how you interpret things because there is so much leeway in those types of things, and if you're not specific, then, um, generally speaking, charges don't hold up. So, that's kinda where we're at. Um, again, we've over a hundred contacts, uh, numerous citations and arrests, um, and quite frankly, they prefer to sleep on the sidewalk.
I'll say, we've, I think trespassed them out of almost every one of our parks, um, for violation of curfew, for camping, sleeping in parks. It's actually an ordinance that's not allowed unless it's in the designated, uh, campground. Um, that's not one of the things um, that the city has done. Mark, if you can be able to speak a little bit to the legal side of things when it comes to loitering, the ordinances that we have in place, um, and some of the concerns even raised by the business owner.
Sure. So, first of all, when Ms. Haas got up to speak, I think she said, um, that she was feeling a little bit stuck right now, if I'm remembering that right. Um, and really, I think that's where the city is, too. My role with the city as a prosecutor is to prosecute criminal offenses that happen in the city of Hutchinson, and that's based on the information that the police department gives me. Um, we're talking about a certain segment of the population at this meeting, but it really needs to be remembered that they have, each of these individuals has rights. Um, I don't prosecute a case that I don't think that I can end up proving in court. Um, so those are things I think about when charges go forward through the court process. Matt, I talked about the fact that we have like twenty-seven cases in court right now. Those are court cases that are making their way through the court system. They are not resolved. Many times in McLeod County, it can take up to a year for a case to get resolved. Um, and again, just like with anyone else, they're entitled to a trial and have to be proven guilty of the offense. Um, we do have some ordinances that address this type of behavior. Um, Matt had talked about a loitering ordinance. That is one ordinance that we don't have. Um, most loitering ordinances that cities have in the state of Minnesota talk about things, as the chief mentioned, rendering a sidewalk unsafe for passage, um, some type of disorderly conduct, like, uh, using profanity, urinating in public, um, fighting, things of that nature. We do have ordinances that address that type of behavior already. We have a disorderly conduct ordinance. Uh, we do have nuisance ordinances that address this type of behavior. We have the trespassing ordinance, and that's also a state statute. And so, these individuals already are being prosecuted under the ordinances that we have. Um, Ms. Haas talked a little, a little bit about, when she said they were feeling stuck, um, I can only prosecute offenses that are criminal in nature. Individual property owners or individuals certainly are entitled to get a harassment restraining order through the court system that can protect them, their employees, their businesses, um, that could give them additional, an additional layer of protection or comfort, if you wanna put it that way. Um, but really, that's it, that's it in a nutshell. I mean, we, we have the ordinances in effect. They are being prosecuted. The chief talked about the contacts that they've made with individuals in the community. Um.
So, are kind of business owner, um, trespass these individuals from their property?
Certainly. Um, one thing that you have to keep in mind, however, so again, I'm just going to the downtown area, you know, that Highway fifteen right away goes right up to the facade of the building. So, unless those individuals are actually in the building, they're on state property.
Um, so you've talked about, we've got several of these ordinance violations, so is that a petty misdemeanor, misdemeanor?
Most of the offenses are misdemeanor in nature, and for people who don't work with the courts every day, that's punishable by up to ninety days in jail and a thousand dollar fine or both. Um, that doesn't mean that a judge is going to pronounce that severe of a sentence. Uh, just like with anyone else, it depends on the criminal history and the circumstances of the offense. And first and foremost, whether they were found guilty of the offense or not.
So, can the city strengthen those sentences?
Nope, the city is only empowered by the state to have misdemeanor-level offenses as part of its ordinance book.
Um, we talked a little bit about, you know, we've got several, we don't have an, uh, I know Pat has talked to me about this. We don't have a loitering ordinance that specifically kinda groups all this together. A lot of our ordinances are kinda spread throughout between the, the public nuisance. I included a copy of that in your pack and all the various different ordinances that deal with a lot of the, I guess, offenses that you even see here that are taking place. I've also included copies from other cities that have loitering ordinances that are in effect that we could look to adopt and, and put in place. Uh, Mark, maybe one last question. Can you, and we hear a lot of times, why doesn't the city just arrest them and put them in jail? If you can answer that question.
You know, throwing somewhere on a squad car and taking to the next town. I mean, again, we're centered on this certain group of individuals, but it's important to remember that, you know, this would apply to anyone, okay? Everyone has their constitutional rights. Um, there has to be probable cause that a crime has been committed to begin with. Um, you know, and frankly, unless there's something of what I would call an extreme nature, which would be a very violent fight, some type of, of an assault with a weapon, something of that nature, more likely than not, the police department isn't going to arrest someone and have them held overnight on down in Glen Coach. If you can speak to it yourself, you live it every day, but, um.
It's no different than me getting a speeding ticket. It doesn't mean I'm gonna end up in jail. Or something else, probably.
I think the hard part, and for those of you here, I mean, this has gone on, it's never been this visible. You know, they were in the parks other years. We might have been on the peripheral aware of it. This is hard as a, as a, as a constituent of yours. It's hard for me, it pains me to see them out there. My heart goes out to them. And yet, I think arms have been extended, Bev, I mean, and those have somewhat been abused, and that's where the hard part is for us. There's nothing we'd love more than to find a place to put them. I don't know how you do that. If the city takes that upon themselves, I hate to sound like legalese, but that's a real conundrum. I, I wish there was an easy solution to this. Um, and I'm sure most of you maybe have some opinions, but I think, guys, if we maybe have a public hearing at our next meeting and more people can voice their opinions or ideas, it's just, I mean, Gary, don't, it's just, I don't like seeing it. And, and part of it, my heart doesn't like seeing it. Part of it is, I feel sorry for your business owners. It's tough. I, I saw it, you know, you see it day-to-day if you're on Main Street and you see it, and it's hard. It's pretty hard to go out there and say, get the hell out, excuse my French, out of here. That's kinda what you'd like to do, probably. I'm guessing if it were my business, it's what I would want to.
I think we need to keep in mind, too, especially when it comes to ordinances, um, you know, whatever we draft or whatever we put in place is for everybody in the community.
Well, and Matt, you mentioned, he, Matt posted like Brainerd and St. Michael. Most of them have loitering as we do on the books. That doesn't give us the right, like Tom said, to arrest them and throw them in jail. There are, there are steps to follow, and it's, quite frankly, it's, it's almost in their advantage right now. I don't know how, and I hate to say even they, I don't wanna make it sound like I'm a better class of people than them, you know, but, uh, and I'm not, but I, it, they gotta want help, too, you know?
Oh, that's, that's, that's the main part, is that you can't help the people that don't wanna be helped. And I'm sure there's been a lot of people in this community that have put.
Reached out, I'm sure.
But, you know, it's supposed to be a hand up, not a handout, but they don't wanna, they don't want it better themselves.
It, it's really difficult. I, I, I think Chief knows, I worked with some veterans who were homeless here a couple of years ago. Uh, and it's the, somebody going out and talking to them and saying, you know, I'm an advocate for you because we're dealing with a lot of mental health issues. Let's just be honest about this. Uh, you know, when you offer somebody, hey, we can take you to a place where you can be warm for the night, have food for the night, and they turn that down. Uh, you know, and, and it's interesting because they don't even think what they're doing to someone else. I don't care if I, if you're not, if you don't have that where, I don't care if I'm affecting your business. This is where I wanna be in. This is where I'm gonna be in. That's, that's America, we, you know, but it's the whole thing of having somebody with that whole compassion note or whatever. And we took a veteran here two years ago up to Stock Center, and he's now making seventy-two thousand dollars a year as a, uh, program person in one of their major businesses down there. He hadn't been given a choice, or nobody had talked to him. So, when it comes to that, we have resources. You know, we have people who can go talk to that, to that, and we're, I know a lot of people have talked about mental health and, and actually police being more mental health and ex, or, you know, advocates, and, and I know our police department here has gone through a lot of courses recently with the whole, how do we deal with the mental health issue and trying to have compassion, those kind of things. But we still have to regulate the law and make sure our businesses and people are protected in this community. So, is there a solution? Yes, more mental health care.
You know, Tim, we know we have a problem, but, uh, if somebody has a solution out there, please get ahold of us, and we will surely make sure that happens, but.
Great organizations like Common Cup, Ucap, I'm sure they've all reached out to them multiple times. It's just very difficult because i- it's the whole, you know, don't go to, I, I don't wanna use this. Don't, if you're feeding people, they're just gonna come, you feed a bird at a bird feeder, they're gonna come back to the bird feeder. Maybe that's a nicer way to put it. And, and sometimes they have to experience that rock bottom to be able to get the help they need. That's just an honest appraisal of it. Sometimes you just gotta let them hit the bottom so they realize that they need help and people will help them.
So, I don't know if we did a great job of kinda sharing, you know, what we've done, at least from the, the police and the, and the legal side of things. I don't know if you guys had anything else you wanted to add to that conversation, so.
I guess I would just like to add one thing. I know that it was brought up, um, as a, a safety concern and that type of thing. Um, it had discussions in the last week or two about, uh, some people not feeling safe, um, downtown, um, closing up their businesses, that type of thing. Um, so that, that's the part that affects me probably the most. Um, I, I, I guess I'm saying this more for the public than I am for the council, but, um, if ever there's a time where you don't feel safe, if you don't feel safe going to your vehicle, or, um, if somebody has done something to you that makes you feel unsafe, that's the time you should be calling the police department. There's no, no, uh, incident that's too minute for us to deal with, especially as it's, uh, as it, uh, as safety, when it comes to safety. Um, so I would encourage anybody out there, not, not just um, the individuals that we happen to be talking about now, but anytime, um, you know, an escort to your car after work, or if you feel like someone's being very aggressive towards you, that's the time that you should be calling the police department. Um, if it's a nine-one-one call, or if it's our admin line, they both get answered. Um, so I would encourage. Um, so I would encourage anybody in the public, if they feel that that's the case, please call us. Um, and those are things we really want to know about when we're trying to, um, negotiate our way through tough problems like this. Um, if we, if we understand now that they're a safety concern and that they're causing o- other community members. Um, not necessarily feel unsafe, but jeopardizing their safety, um, then. Then we're able to do more for that too. Then we start going, uh, through some other channels, so to speak, with them. Um, so I just want to put that out there. Um, I, I feel terrible if that, if you are in that position. But I really encourage you to call and.
None, none of your officers will feel inconvenience to get a call.
Yep, absolutely. So I just wanted to put that out there.
You know, Mayor Council, obviously we spent a little bit of time talking about it. I don't know what your next steps. Would like to be on this. Um, obviously we've got business owners here, um, and I would say they can obviously reach out to any of us, um, especially you guys as elected officials on. Some solutions, um, but I guess I'm looking for that direction on. Okay, we had, this was kind of initial. You asked to have it on the agenda for discussion. Hopefully we did a good job of covering that and then kind of asking what, what would you like next from? Us as, as staff.
I think since we had this, I thought it was a real good discussion, but I think we'll just. Hear the feedback from, from the people and, um, we could do a public hearing.
Or you have like a workshop in public. At least a workshop, public hearing simply because it's getting cold, this isn't going to go away. And I don't want people to think, well, we're just kind of foo fooing it by the legalities. It's not that, it's just. This is a tough question to answer. I mean, I, I wish I.
Be a clear.
It's all homelessness, you know, it, uh, I do. I want to see us continue to take more action and try and get an ending to this somehow. Uh, I don't have that genie in a bottle answer of what exactly we can do, but. I'd like to see all these people here and believe me, our numbers are in the phone book. Emails, give us your ideas and we can come up with something and bring it to the next meeting in two weeks. Address it again.
Would you like to call a public hearing? It went away a little bit first, uh. Or I mean, it doesn't have to be a public hearing, it can be just a workshop where we're. Invited, uh.
Public would be invited.
Yeah. Public invited to provide in, you know, inside input on that, so.
I would like to see that.
I, I guess, uh, well, kind of simple, uh, just raise your hand if you think we, you'd like to get some input on a public hearing. Well, that kind of answers our question. Um, can we set a workshop then, Matt?
Yeah, we can, we can add that at the end of the, end of the meeting. We, we don't have anything scheduled before our next council meeting on the twenty-eighth. So you could do something at four o'clock if you wanted, or even something at, you know, during the regular meeting.
We'll see a workshop, I think.
I mean, sure, so.
A little bit more informal and people can.
Yeah, we can have.
Voice their opinions and get ahold of.
I think I'd like to offer one thing that would, uh. I was told that, uh, citizen, whoever it was, I'm just told this, I've not seen it happen, but was giving them money. Uh, that's probably the worst thing you can do is give them money, especially green, green money. Because then they use it for something other than the food or clothing or that type of thing. And Chief Gibson alluded to, uh, donations that had been made to them. Not saying what the donations were, but it sounded like it was clothes of some sort or another. But, uh, I think the true thing is just don't give them money. Because they're, they're, they're using that as a stepping stone for them to stay. And, uh, they may move on if they don't get money. So I, I'm just suggesting that. Even though we're kind of conflated with our religious beliefs and what we have to do to, uh, clear, you know, to. Take care of something, but on the other hand, uh, money is probably. The worst thing to hand out to them because it gives them the chance to buy whatever they wish to buy other than. What it probably is meant for and I, I know the good hearts of Hutchinson are. Uh, have helped many people throughout the years that I've been here, so, uh, that's just a, uh. Just something I think that we need not to do, even though it probably breaks their heart not to do it, is don't give them cash. Because it just makes them stay here longer when it comes right down to it, so. Just a suggestion, so.
Very.
By two cents.
Very. We will probably set that workshop for them, so.
And we can, we can do that when we get to the end of our, uh, action items on our new business.
Okay, all right. Moving on, discussion on regulate, regulating mailbox clusters.
Yep, this was another discussion item that came up, I think at our, at the end of our last council meeting on some. Concerns with, uh, kind of mailbox clusters, uh, placement in town impacts, um, neighborhoods and so. Was asked if we could at least put that on the agenda for future discussion. So here we are again tonight, um, on that. Just a couple of things. Our current city code essentially says that mailboxes are allowed within the cities right of way. That's the only regulation that we, we do on it. We don't essentially do anything else. Most of those are actually owned by the post office. And placement of those clusters are determined by the post office and as long as they're in the right of way, the city generally doesn't get involved on. On where those are placed or, or how they're, are placed. Um, I know the post office does have some standards for them. I think I included those in your council packet. Our quick. Kind of reach out to other cities of, okay, what do you guys have on the books for ordinances? And most cities got back to us saying, we do not regulate mailbox clusters. It's a, something that's determined by the post office, um. There was a, a couple of cities that do have some things in place in regards to. Um, you know, how many feet apart they need to be. Um, a lot of it kind of pointing back to, it's, you know, not a lot, but some do maybe have that as a part of, uh, development to agreements. But for the most part, the response we got back is that's not something that, that we regulate. And so it's been tough for me to find any examples of what cities can do to, to regulate it. But, um, I guess I want to at least put on the agenda for discussion and feedback from, from council members and, and I will note. Anything that we put in place, probably someone will have to work with the post office to make sure they're comfortable, um, with that as, as well.
Well, and I brought this up and, and I think our discussion since then has been, you know, having the planning committee looking at, look at it for new developments. Uh, cause we're, we're now talking about the sidewalks and new developments and that, uh, provide, and. I told somebody the other day, we shouldn't be more concerned about the postal customers and the postal services. Uh, when people are falling down on ice and snow because they haven't had, the boxes haven't been cleared. Uh, when they're next to fire hydrants, when we have different things like that, no pull over lanes, so people are parking the wrong direction in the roads. That becomes an issue. It's a safety issue. It's not about where they are, it's that it's a safety issue. So if the planning committee, our planning commission can talk and developers can say, listen, we're going to go talk to the post offices where we like the box, cluster boxes to be. They don't have to agree, but having the discussion, cause I'm sure the post office finds out last minute, hey, there's houses going here where they're going to be. Where we can possibly put some safety features in when they're doing the roads and the sidewalks, uh, for that division or for that area.
Well, Dan's here. Dan, is there anything, do you know of anything that relates to this here?
This is Matt, two, uh, the postal service has a guideline document of, of how they should be. Um, I polled a bunch of different city planner, community development director types I'm familiar with and. A- as Matt noted, none of the cities are getting involved. Um, you know, the, the post office ultimately has the say of where it's going to go. I think theoretically, we could ask the developers to. You know, put that on their plats, for instance. Um, you know, in terms of the maintenance and whatnot, I know in my neighborhood where I live. You know, the post office won't deliver if the boxes aren't cleared, but. The neighbors are like, well, whose job is it to clear it? Because, you know, it's front of my house, but, you know, there's twenty people that are benefiting from it, so. It, it typically is, is that some, somebody just has to maintain that and. And, uh, clear it out. So I guess we can look into it further, but like I said, at the end of the day, the city doesn't have, really have any. Control, the post office gets to decide where they're going to be.
Do you know of any cities that really do put a lot of input into it or not, or?
I don't, no, just because I think the, the history's done with the postal services is that, you know, we don't. Unless the neighborhood is already getting serviced by a postal carrier on foot, they want to be able to drive up to it and, and fill that. From right from the vehicle, right? They're not. They're not having it be where it gets delivered to your house. Um, you know, certain ones they'll do a, um, you know, are like a rural box at the end of a driveway yet, but for the most part, they're doing the cluster boxes. So.
And I think from the printout you included, Matt, from. The postal service was about forty pages in regards to where they can put their. Quit reading after like.
You fell asleep.
The funny part is, is the one where the cluster we're talking about, they're actually moving because it became a safety hazard. So it's the whole thing of, can we make this not a safety hazard before it becomes one?
Yeah, I, I a hundred percent agree. And I think to me, like that one in question, there were so many boxes there, there shouldn't be more than. Maybe a dozen or fourteen boxes in a spot because you just get too many people.
We're building it. We have ten extra feet of concrete to go to put a pull over lane, so we're not sitting with a car in traffic. You know, people get out, especially in the winter. Now, when it gets dark early, they get home from work and, you know, I've seen two people fall. Getting out of their cars and. The reason I brought it up is because it's a safety concern. I have.
Sure.
No vested interest in it other than to make sure our citizens are safe. And if we can work with the post office and yeah, I'm not saying demand something from them, but if we can put something in front of them that makes sense, uh.
Yeah, I think what we can do from city staff standpoint on the, at least on the plating process is have. The developer identify where they'd like to put the post office boxes and then we can review that. And then, and to see, you know, how it will fit, but like I said, at the end of the day, I don't think. You know, especially being federal, they have the, the right to put it where they kind of want.
Can't affect that. So, I, it, like I said, I think we probably hurdled it where what needs to be right now, but it's just moving forward. You know, if they're well, if they're work, willing to work with it and plot it and kind of get a good idea of where it's going to be and make sure it's in a safe spot.
I think that's a conversation Dan and I can have when we're moving forward with the kind of the development process to see if there's an option that we can put something in there to at least. Make sure that gets addressed upfront.
Uh, we brought it up with the post offices last one and they moved it, they moved one of them because it was a safety issue.
That's where I look at it and like, is it, is it something that we need to regulate as a city or is that just, uh? You know, when we run into these situations that we have those conversations and ends up in the result that it did or they ended up getting.
Well, we have engineers who are quite qualified at looking at land plots and looking at development areas and saying, this would be a great place for it. Let's build it in and.
The other thing I guess I would just note is, is that I've been here for like fifteen years now and. This is really the first issue we've had on mailbox clusters. So apparently some of the other ones must be working okay because we don't hear about them.
Yeah, it's the whole, I'm not look, like I said, I didn't want to open the big can of worms. It was just this, this one. And moving forward. Can we look at it from a city's perspective and have a conversation with the postal? Hey, that's not a great place for this because of this, this and this. Our plow is going to hit it going this way or. You know, we're putting snow up into a driveway, uh, we're covering a fire hydrant, those kind of things.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Dan. Any other?
Well, thank you for letting me have that discussion.
Yep. That's what we're here for. All right, moving on, uh, unfinished business, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight sixty-one. Ordinance to rezon property at nine fifty-five Gulf Course Road Northwest.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As you recall, last council meeting, I was here with the first reading and, uh. For the ordinance amendment to rezone the property on Gulf Course Road. If you recall, that's for a proposed, uh, memory care facility. Um, I haven't gotten any other comments in the meantime, and if you haven't either, I'd recommend, uh. Adoption and approval of that ordinance to rezon.
Motion approved, second reading number two five dash eight six one.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve that ordinance. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The post say nay, motion carries. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight sixty-two. Uh, ordinance to rezon property at Elk's Ridge Estates.
Yes, uh, similar to the last one, um, was here, uh, two weeks ago, looking at the first reading of this. And staff would recommend going ahead and moving forward with the adoption of the second reading of this rezoning ordinance.
Most approve ordinance number twenty-five dash eight sixty-two.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve that ordinance. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The post say nay, motion carries. Uh, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight sixty-three. Uh, ordinance granting MediaCom Minnesota LLC a franchise extension.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As we talked about at the last meeting, um, our franchise agreement with MediaCom expired on. August thirty-first and the attorneys that are negotiating the new agreement. Um, are still working on it, so they requested that a four-month extension be put in place. Um, nothing's changed since the first reading two weeks ago. Um, I'd ask that you approve the second reading and adoption of this extension with MediaCom.
Motion approved, two five eight six three.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, motion carries. Uh, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight sixty-four. Ordinance granting Nuom Telecom Incorporated a French high extension.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, similar to the last item, this is, um, a four-month extension of our telecommunication ordinance with Nuvera. Again, that agreement is in the process of being renegotiated, so they needed a four-month extension until December thirty-first and. I'd ask that you approve it.
Most approve.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
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 Post say nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Under new business, first reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash eight sixty-five. Uh, ordinance granting a franchise to Robert Honky. Of Library Square East LLC to place a flagpole on city property located at one fifteen First Avenue Southeast.
Um, this is a unique situation in that when we were going through a. A street pruner project last year, there was a flagpole that was in place that didn't have a franchise agreement and was. Taken down and so the property owners desiring to, to continue, continue with the flagpole, so this is to. Essentially get something in place so that doesn't happen again, so.
Kind of got lost in the red tape.
Yes.
And I see the staff has worked to relocate it to a.
Yeah.
Location that's.
Not in the middle of the sidewalk, yes, so.
Motion approved, two five eight six five.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, motion carries. Resolution number one five nine two two. Resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Hutchinson to re, reimburse. Certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city in two thousand twenty-six.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council members. So this is an annual process that we go through, uh, this resolution. Basically to abide by the IRS rules when we issue tax exempt bonds. And as you know, we issue tax exempt bonds every year for our roadway projects. In fact, we're, um, receiving our bond proceeds on Thursday morning for this year's, uh, roadway projects. But in order to use those proceeds to reimburse already incurred costs, which is our practice, we need to pass a resolution such as this. So this resolution is setting us up for next year's roadway projects, but also I'm bringing it earlier. Simply because we're expecting a payment for the ladder truck at the end of twenty twenty-five or early twenty-six. So this gives us flexibility to, flexibility to issue the bonds next September as we usually do. And reimburse, uh, costs for that ladder truck if we choose. And then also for the wastewater, uh, facility biosolid project, we're likely looking at issuing bonds for that project as well. So this is just setting us up to abide by IRS guidelines to make them happy and make our bond attorneys happy as well. So I ask that you approve this resolution.
Motion approve resolution number fifteen. Motion to approve resolution number fifteen-nine-twenty-two.
Second. Motion by Tim, second by Dave to approve, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay, motion carries. Uh, resolution number one-five-nine-two-three, resolution assigning use of statewide affordable housing aid money.
Um, Mayor Council, we had a discussion on this at our last council meeting. Um, with direction given to council, they're kind of bringing forward some options for the the council to consider, and so I've included. Really, I think there's what, three or four different resolutions that that you can consider, one is. Is an option that would um, split the money up, um, kind of as requested or. As considered by at least one request, that'd be to give eighty thousand to Crow River Habitat for Humanity. With remaining hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred and twelve thousand going to the HRA. Option two is uh. Simply giving all the money to the the HRA. So that'd be a hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars, option. Three is kind of a, a split the requests, so it'd be forty thousand to Crow River Habitat for Humanity. And hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twelve to the HRA, and then I left a. Fourth option where you fill in the blank and what those dollar amount uh. Wants to be, but um, it's really the options out there as we talked about at the last meeting. Um, this is state funding that was started, that was given to us, I think it started in twenty-three. And by this December, we have to start designating those funds for a specific uh. Use, and so um, you know, you don't necessarily have to do it tonight, we have a little bit of time, but we're in the process of. Or we need to be in the process of designating those funds um, for a specific program. Kind of laid out the the requirements as identified by the the statute and just really looking for. Direction from the council and where you'd like to assign those funds to.
I've looked at the four proposals. This is just my own, I would like to see option three, where we allow forty thousand to. The Habitat for Humanity and the one seventeen or one, excuse me. One fifty-seven, six, twelve to. HRA, that's just mine. Dave, whatever.
Is that a motion, Pat?
Yeah, I'll put that in form of motion.
I'll second it. Motion by Pat, second by myself to. We are not taking any like comment on this.
So you have a motion and a second. So now we go to discussion.
Discussion, correct.
Thank you, just clarifying. I guess the question I have is this the first time we'd be considering putting money towards a like a Crow River Habitat for Humanity?
Yes, as far as I can remember, you know, generally, the city is not allowed to get money towards nonprofits. Now, when this money was established, it gave that exception um, for nonprofit housing agencies. And so generally, we, as Martin noted earlier with the, when Dave asked the question, you know, we're not allowed to get money to nonprofits as a, as a municipality. So my time here, I may be wrong, it probably the first time that we would do that, but once again, that's something that was allowed by the statute. Or by the law that was passed, I should say.
So I would lean that way, I would lean to agree with Pat on this one of. Of the forty thousand, which gives us the a first step into it, look at, you know, find it after actions report on it. How did it go? What were we able to provide in the community with that funding? And I'm the accountability person, tell me how it's going to work and tell me where we're going to go with it. And then show me that it worked, and and I've had the same discussions, I think Judy, she was here, our HRA director. You know, and she, there she is, and and thank you Judy for going, she took a lot of questions I had to a meeting. Uh, with her fellow HRA representatives and they had a lot of great feedback, because we had other ideas. But she was able to kind of pose those questions, kind of like Matt does when he goes to a meeting of his peers is. Have you ever seen this done before? And then what are the hurdles? So I I agree with Pat on this of what's. Move that direction, put the forty thousand dollars there. Use the rest for the the HRA's other programs and I'll see how it works.
Uh, just for clarification, I am on the HRA board and I consulted with Mark. City attorney and said it's not a conflict of interest for me to vote on this.
Well, thank you for that, that's a great one.
Yeah, I would just, I would know, I I would note for the public's knowledge too, to for a conflict of interest, there has to be a financial gain for an elected official.
Correct.
One thing to keep in mind, most of you serve on various committees and commissions and boards throughout the city. Actions that come in front of you all the time that you.
And basically what we have in front of us is four different options proposed by HRA. Correct?
What's that?
The options we have here were proposed by the HRA?
That was the request that we had into staff, I I'm giving you four options to consider. Based off of the the feedback from the last meeting, you can go either any which way the the you would want. The HRA requested all of the funding, the Habitat asked for eighty thousand. Those are the two requests that that the council discussed at the last meeting.
So the HRA's recommendation was?
The HRA asked for all of it. The HRA asked for all of it. The hundred ninety-seven, that's option two. That's in your council packet.
So I think when I was approached by Habitat. I absolutely agreed that we should split it eighty and whatever left over for HRA, then. Molding that over in my pea brain, I uh. You know, it's always good to help a one family, but. HRA had all the money, we could help probably eight or nine, ten families more from that perspective and rehab and that type of thing. So I come, kind of concluded myself as to now which way am I going to turn? And so I'm uh, I'm hedging, but uh. I I could probably go with the forty uh, thousand rather than the eighty thousand, so if it helps another four families in rehabbing and. Whatever else they're updating, that might might be the thing. So I'm, like I say, I concluded myself by saying, yeah, to one and not. Might be searching everything out in my, uh, to make myself either believe it or not believe it, so. I don't, it's tough, it's a tough decision to make, but. Again, HRA is a part of city and. Uh, Habitat is not, so.
Just to back up.
What's that?
Need to back up, just for clarification for the public's knowledge. HRA is a separate entity from the city.
HRA is a separate entity. But works through the council and whatever.
You mean, there's there's certain requirements you guys have to have, you guys give final say on their tax levy.
Alright, thanks for.
You point a, you appoint a board member to the board on that, but it is a separate.
And thanks for the clarification, so.
I think, you know, Bailey, when you presented to us two weeks ago. You had mentioned that the current or the next project is fully funded. This I hope gets a start in this, the right direction for you guys, you know, we hadn't done it before and. It's a starting point, this money may end, but it should continue to come into the city for next, you know. Next following years down the road.
We're not setting any precedence by doing a split, one way shape for another.
It's the first time we've done it.
And from that perspective, you're right, I mean, because this is the first time we've done it, I don't think you're not going to be bound to anything because every situation's different, so.
And Tim asked that same question, like I said, we generally do not give to nonprofits because we legally cannot. There's an exception made with this bill that allowed the money to go to nonprofits.
And I think Hudson, doesn't Hutchinson Arts fall kind of into that too, because that's a not-for-profit?
Yeah, it's a nonprofit, but there's a statute that allows.
So yes, it's the statute allowing for that.
Statute that allows for that, yes, good, so. Except those are all the laws and most people have no clue about that, we do our best to try to like keep track of and follow them.
Well, this position you spend a lot of time asking a lot of questions about, because you.
All right, any other discussion? Call of motion, all in favor, say aye. The post say nay, motion carries. Alrighty, uh, setting budget workshop for November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mayor Council, we have our fourth workshop that's scheduled, and this is regarding our enterprise fund, so we're looking to do that. Before our first meeting in November, which as you recall, we moved to Wednesday, November twelfth, so we look to do that at four o'clock on November twelfth.
Motion approved.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve, set that workshop. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay, motion carries. Uh, set the workshop on the homeless discussion.
I would recommend if you want to, you know, generally workshop gives us a little bit more time to take, uh, to have discussion, feedback, input. So if you look to have a workshop on it, we're, and I would maybe say you're going to. Take public comment, I'd look to schedule that for four o'clock on October twenty-eighth, which would be before your next council meeting. That gives you a good hour, hour and a half to have a discussion on it.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to set that workshop at four o'clock on the twenty-eighth. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post say nay, motion carries.
So October twenty-eighth at four o'clock, so.
Uh, we have uh. The library board minutes from August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And the Hutchins Liquor Hutch quarter report for January through September of two thousand twenty-five. Let's see, Judy, you got anything else for us? Tom, you got anything for us? Candy, you got anything for us? Alrighty, Mike, you got anything? Is all the, all the street stuff wrapped up now, striping, everything?
Nothing else tonight?
Alright, Matt?
I thought Mike was going to put the plug in, but I'll do it, uh, leaf vacuuming has started, started Monday. So that goes till what, the Monday before Thanksgiving? Friday before Thanksgiving. So.
Mike, why didn't you run over the rules for that, this so people know. It's the day after garbage pickup.
Correct, and and the one change this year is that. We started with Fridays, last Fridays to do this Monday, typically it was kind of a Tuesday and we always ended on a Monday. That always got confusing for folks, and so as Matt said, previous years, it was always the Monday before. This year, we're trying to run six full weeks, so yesterday's basically started based on last Friday's pickup, but it allows us six full weeks. To take us right up until that week before Thanksgiving.
They even did my street.
Skip the mayors.
But generally, the rules are that leaves in the street, not, you know, tree and and uh, branch debris. Um, grass clippings, things like that, please use the compost bin. If you've got a light amount of leaves, use your compost bin, that's always a great place to put those, whether it's these six weeks or others. And typically, again, wait until the night before to put the leaves in. You get a day like today, thankfully, we didn't have heavy rain, but if we did, we would have filled a lot of catch basins with leaves. And so um, trying to adhere to the schedule as best you can um, is is really beneficial to the overall program. But so far, off to a good start.
Alrighty, sounds good. Matt, you have anything else?
Two other things, uh, the fountain went in last week in the Crow River, so I want to make sure we thank the. Birch Foundation and Citizens Bank for that, um, we'll probably come out this week. We want to make sure it was up and tested and going, but it's obviously getting colder. Um, and that'll be back in there come the the spring of of next year, so hopefully we'll have a full summer of that. Um, being available to the public, and then just a reminder for elected officials, if you haven't yet. Take RSVP for the recognition event, that's uh, early November, so. That's it for me.
Pat's been working on his bad dad jokes already, so.
Preparing.
Uh, Timmy, let's start with you.
I'll be having, and I'll, you'll see it in the paper here, I'll be having two town halls, uh, one-on-ones or one with groups. On the upcoming budget with the citizens, I'll have the locations and everything, I've talked to the Hutchinsons station about, they're going to print. Uh, the dates and times, uh, because I'd like to meet with as many people of the public as I possibly can on the uh, upcoming budget. And then ideas for the community, so I've been talking about doing it, now I finally, I'll be setting the dates and having those help, so.
Timmy?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I was waiting, I thought you were saying Dave. I needed to borrow one of his ear hearing aids.
Dave, what do you got?
Uh, not much, I just want to kind of. Oh, Matt, upon a fountain is, have had a lot of comments that people really like it and they're very glad that it is uh, operating again. Probably won't be for long when the river freezes over, but it'll be there, so.
Somebody, we were talking the other day, they said about how nice it would look at Christmas time, and then they caught themselves and realized, well, it's probably not going to be operating at Christmas time.
But that was good, I don't have anything else.
Couple things, bike and walk to school was last Wednesday, and there's pretty good participation, I think there was five locations it went from. And it was kind of fun, Mike and I were near the same one and and uh. The other thing was, um, last Thursday night, there was a chance for stores to be open and shop downtown. It was hugely successful, we uh, couple store owners said it was like Black Friday. So I really encourage people that next year, Valerie, I mean, it just went really well, they were busy, it was nice to see, it was kind of crazy. And my wife talked me into spending money. Places I normally wouldn't have, so.
That was a good turnout, ran in the pathway.
Holding a corner sign for a while.
Yep.
Anything else?
Very, um. Got a couple things, I I know I'm a little late, but uh, just uh, be. Aware of farm machinery on the road, because uh, all the farm machinery is huge nowadays, so. If you see them on the road, give them plenty of room. So this is just a short little bit, so just be patient with them. Uh, the other thing, uh, I know, uh, usually talk about fraud quite a bit, so. Actually, uh, on Thursday, October thirtieth, uh. From ten AM to one PM, there will be a fraud forum hosted by area businesses aligned with the Hutchinsons Police Department. And McLeod County Sheriff, um, it's at the event center. Uh, they do ask you, it's free of charge, but they do ask you to RSVP. So, um, just check that out, uh, Tom, you want to say anything on that part there?
Pretty much nailed it.
Okay, alrighty, so.
One, one thing I made before you adjourn, um, you know, we're, obviously you guys have scheduled this workshop for this discussion on ordering in our homelessness. I would just encourage you, if there's anything that you want staff to bring to that, I would even. Say to the public, if there's anything that you're looking for from us that we can share with you, reach out to us. Um, let us know, I'll try to do our best to provide whatever I can to you, I mean, I think I'll have a copy of our current ordinances. Maybe provide some sample of what other cities have done. Um, but if there's any specific you want from the city, please reach out to me or council members. Um, reach out to me or the staff, we can work on, I can work with Mark and Tom to get whatever you guys need for that meeting, so. That's it, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to adjourn, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post say nay, motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.